The views and opinions in this program are not those of CISA VII or Spectrum.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our April 25th, 2022 special board meeting. We're going to start with roll call. Beth?
Lyerly.
Here.
Welch.
Here.
Becker.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
McCoy.
Here.
Leighton and Warren.
Here.
Okay, we are six present and one is on his way. So I would entertain a motion to go into closed session. Laura? Oh. You want to go ahead and read the motion, Nancy?
Sure. I move that the board convene in closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.851C to consider employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over whom the board has jurisdiction and Wisconsin Statute 19.851F to consider financial, medical, social, or personal histories, which if discussed in public would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of persons referred to, especially to discuss the interim superintendent's administrative contract.
Do you have a second?
Second?
Okay, we are adjourned into... Oh, sorry. This is why, this is why I'm gonna need you, Beth.
Welch.
Aye.
Leighton and Warren.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Laye-
Aye.
Becker.
Aye.
McCoy.
Aye.
Okay, we're adjourned into closed session. Welcome back, everyone. We are reconvenient, reconvening into open session after coming out of closed session. And before I, we start with the, the balance of the agenda, I just want to welcome our new board members, James Lyerly and Brian Mills to the table. This will be the first time that we've all been in the same place. Well, unfortunately Dawn is, is remote tonight, but it's kind of nice for us all finally be in the same meeting. And so we'll proceed with the balance of the agenda. Um. Okay, so the first item on our agenda is the election of our district officers and the Secretary of the Board of Education. Item number one is election of president. Are there any motions? Oh, sorry. Nominations. Thank you, Andrew. Yes. Special meetings are a little different. They, there was a few things that, that we would normally do that we don't do in a special, in a special meeting. All right.
I still want to go.
Go ahead, Laura.
I'd move to, I don't know if you need a formal motion, but I, I would like to nominate Laura McCoy for the position of president. I think she's demonstrated leadership in the last year since I've been on the board. I think she brings a lot of strengths and will do justice to that position and keep us moving forward and, and keep us on track. And also bringing the integrity that's needed for that position. So that's my vote for my nomination.
I second.
Nominations don't require a second.
Oh, well, I still do, Andrew. That's how, that's how strongly I feel about it.
Okay, um, any discussion? I, I don't know if we even asked for discussion in these. I, it's been a while.
I mean, a lot of times there isn't. A lot of times there isn't any, but the floor would be open to discuss candidates. Sometimes there's less of it if there's just one.
Okay. Anyone, anyone want to have a go? Okay. Did you say, Beth, did you say you wanted to do voice votes? Okay. Yes.
Leighton and Warren.
Aye.
Mills.
Aye.
Welch.
Aye.
Lyerly.
Aye.
McCoy.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Becker.
Aye. Have we done this before? That there was only one candidate? We just said aye instead of the candidate? I mean, I think it's, it's clear what, what it meant, but I, usually you would say the, the name, but maybe I guess as long as it's clear what was meant.
I have no, I have no memory of what we did the last time, so um, I don't know what the proper procedure is, but-
Maybe we should just do it again and everyone say McCoy.
Okay.
Go ahead, Beth.
Leighton and Warren.
McCoy.
Mills.
McCoy.
Welch.
McCoy.
Lyerly.
McCoy.
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 Smith.
McCoy.
Becker.
McCoy.
Um, okay, the nomination passes. I don't know what the right wording is. The next up is the election of the vice president. I would entertain nominations at this point. Go ahead.
I am nominating Dawn Smith for the vice presidency of the Green Bay Public School Board. Over the past year, I've been on the operations committee where Dawn was the chair. I have been, I've seen an able, open-minded leader with the ability to lead meetings and a great communicator who keeps our students and staff at the center of her decision-making. I believe she would do an excellent job as vice president of the board.
Okay, we don't need a second, so we can go ahead and proceed with the vote. Oh, sorry.
I would like to also make a nomination.
Oh, please.
Um, I'd like to nominate Andrew Becker for vice president for the school board. I've known Andrew for quite some time. His experience in this board is well-known and well-documented. Obviously, all of the board members, I believe, have their, the best view for students and for our district at heart. I think having different opinions and different perspectives is valuable, so I would like to nominate Andrew for vice president.
Okay, we have two candidates anymore? Okay, so now we can do, um... Oh, I'm sorry. Just bear with me, everybody. Please, if you would like to have remarks at this point, go ahead. Andrew?
I don't, I don't intend to drag this out because I, I imagine that I might not have majority support. I also don't think it's a disaster for working relationships or far from it if it's not unanimous for vice president. I, I do think it's important and I, I think this, there was, you know, tradition isn't always right, but sometimes it comes up with something pretty good. And I think the idea of having intentionally, like Adorf and Brenda Warren looked at intentionally having people of different perspectives in the president and vice president role, I, I think created value. I was, I was part of that where Brenda Warren and I, I think, had a fairly significant differences of opinion, which was healthy to be in the room with with Superintendent Langenfeld. And so I, yeah, that's, that's where I come from. I think it's, I think it's good to choose some diversions of viewpoints for, for that, but as, at the same time, I think things will go well and ultimately, ultimately having a a superintendent who, you know, is listening to and taking into consideration all board members is what's, what's really more important than who's in what, what seat. And that is an area that I'm not at all worried about this year.
Dawn, do you want to share any remarks?
Well, Nancy, I just want to thank you for your very kind words. Operations Committee was pretty great this past year. You know, I, I believe in the process and there are seven board members and everybody needs to vote for who they think is just going to best fill that position for the next year. And I support whoever the majority votes for. You know, Laura and I don't always agree on things. Andrew and I don't always agree on things. None of us all agree on things at all, at all times. But regardless of how the vote goes, it's, I agree with Andrew. This isn't going to damage any relationships. It doesn't have to be a unanimous vote, so.
I support Dawn if she wins. I mean, yeah.
And Andrew, I, I support you if you went to. We're all good.
Okay. Are we ready to vote? Okay, all right.
Leighton and Warren.
Smith.
McCoy.
Smith.
Mills.
Becker.
Welch.
Smith.
Lyerly.
Smith.
Becker.
Becker.
Smith.
Smith.
Okay, our new vice president is Dawn Smith. The vote was five to two, correct. Our next election is for treasurer and I would entertain a nomination at this point. Andrew?
I nominate Nancy Welch for treasurer.
Are there any other nominations?
No, but I second Nancy. Even though I don't need to, I still do. I think she will be an excellent treasurer for us.
Okay, Nancy, do you care to share any?
I would be honored to be the treasurer.
Okay, I think we're ready for a vote.
Smith.
Welch.
Becker.
Welch.
Lyerly.
Welch.
McCoy.
Welch.
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 Mills.
Welch.
Leighton and Warren.
Welch.
Okay, the vote is seven zero. Nancy Welch is our new treasurer. Moving on to an election of clerk. I would entertain nominations at this point. Laura?
Hi, I would like to nominate Andrew Becker for the clerk. He would do a great job and I know he's a great asset to the team.
Okay. Anybody else want to nominate? Anybody else? Okay. Andrew, would you like to say anything at this point?
Just that, you know, traditionally treasurer and clerk are more ceremonial offices. We, we have a role. It's, it's generally after president and vice president generally goes to people who've been there longer and I had talked, had talked to Laura Leighton and Warren about it and she is going to pass this, this time and yeah, so I'm supportive of Nancy and happy to. I think treasurer and clerk, it's sometimes good to just switch things up a little bit and I think if I remember right, I think although in both cases most functions are able to be handled by e-signatures and virtual stamps, maybe maybe I'm doing you a little bit of a favor because I think maybe they have to come running for the clerk just a little bit more often than treasurer, but it's rare in either case. So I look forward to being clerk again as I have been before.
Okay, I think we're ready to vote.
Welch.
Becker.
Mills.
Becker.
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 Leighton and Warren.
Becker.
Smith.
Becker.
Lyerly.
Becker.
McCoy.
Becker.
Okay, um, vote is seven zero. Our new clerk is Andrew Becker. The next one is the election of the secretary to the Board of Education. I'm going to go ahead and nominate Beth Jones, who does a sterling job at that, at that position. We literally could not function without her. I talked to her most days in some way or another. And I have every confidence in her, so I would like to nominate Beth. Is there anyone else who wants to nominate anybody else? I don't even know if that's a thing. Anyone, anyone want to say anything?
Thank you, Beth. You're fabulous.
Yes, can we, can we kiss your feet, please?
Everything Laura said is true. We're very lucky to have you in the position you're in and we all appreciate the support you provide to us, so. Thank you.
Okay, if no one else has anything else to say, then we are ready to take a vote.
Leighton and Warren.
Aye.
Jones.
Mills.
Jones.
Welch.
Jones.
Lyerly.
Jones.
McCoy.
Jones.
Smith.
Jones.
Becker.
Jones.
Okay, the vote is seven zero and Beth will continue as our secretary to the Board of Education. Okay. Continuing on, um, I, I've spoken to, I think, most of you about some of these appointments that that happen. I the, the legislative liaison, I did speak to James about this. He showed interest in being our new legislative liaison. I think that some of that work can be done. I think Lori, who's out there, might be able to guide you as you, as you kind of start that. There's, there's a number of people who keep tabs in our district tabs on what's happening legislatively. But the job basically is that once a month you report to the board about anything that's happening down in Madison or across the state that affects affects public education in general, but our district in particular. So and you've said that you would agree to do that, so thank you very much. Do you have any, do you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, I will need support, so.
Lori Blakesley is, is our, is our resident person who, who, who keeps track of things legislatively. But like I said, there's other people as well, so, but we can, we can get you set up there, so. Um, the next one is the CISA VII liaison and representative to the annual convention. I did reach out to Brian today. Brian, are you still open to taking that?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Do you have anything you'd like to add?
No.
Thank you. Um, the next one is the WASB delegate and alternate. I, I am hoping to stay on in that position as I have for the last, I don't know, about three or four years. Mostly, the biggest part of that is going to the convention in Milwaukee in January where you take part in the delegate assembly and a lot of that has to do with just being free and being able to get down to the convention and that's more challenging for some people than others. And so if you don't mind, I would like to continue in that role. If we have some consensus, thank you. And then finally, the Head Start representative. Nancy Welch and I have been doing that for the last year, which has been fun and interesting. There's a lot of interesting stuff going on with Head Start and our 4K program. Some reorganization is happening there and I'm stepping away from that. But, because I've been at this, like I said, a number of years now, but Nancy is going to stay and Laura Leighton and Warren has agreed to also do that with her. So the two of them together, I think the two of them together, I think will, will enjoy that work. It's, it's really interesting and fun. And very, very important to our district. So, and that completes that portion of our, of our agenda. The next are the action items. And up first is ESER III Evidence-Based Intervention Strategies Multi-Year Contract. We're going to be hearing from Nancy, I believe. Nancy, sure.
Yeah, I will-
Along with Claudia Henderson.
Okay, all right.
Just give some basic information and then Nancy and Claudia are here to answer any questions that board members might have. We do have an opportunity because of ESER funding to do a multi-year, you can come on up, Nancy, if you want, please. Thank you. Multi-year contract for a platform called Pandora that basically is a resource where we can put our assessment information, intervention information in one location, easier to access by our teachers, administrators, and interventionists, including our student services staff. In addition, we are bringing forward NIQ. Nancy will talk a little bit about this, but it does replace ACT Aspire interim assessment. Am I saying that right for us, Nancy? Yeah, why don't you, why don't you explain that part?
Okay, I'll first answer any questions and give you some information on NIQ. It's a platform that we purchased during, when we were working offline and we Dr. Wigan and Mr. Miller felt that a prep for the ACT Aspire, which is our state assessment, would be great so students have experience in taking a rigorous like assessment prior to the state assessment. The, and thank you for the board member that sent the question last night regarding this. The state of Wisconsin determines which assessments we give as a state assessment. The interim, the Aspire interim is, was a choice of the district to prepare our kids for the Aspire summative. The Aspire summative is the state assessment. And the point I wanted to make here is that the interim assessment, the ACT suite has expired it, so you can't even get that anymore as a, like a practice test or warm-up test for the Aspire summative. And at the conclusion of the 2022 school year, ACT will be expiring the, the ace, the, the Aspire summative. So both of those assessments are going to fall off. One was our, like our warm-up for them and that is no longer even available. The second one of the state assessment, we've been notified that this is the last year that they'll use the Aspire summative for that assessment. At this time, we have not been given any, and I spoke with Mr. Miller just prior to this meeting and we nothing's been brought forward by DPI as to what will replace that as a state assessment. So that would answer, we, we never, those are summative assessments, our state assessments, our forwards, so on and so forth. Those are always determined by the Department of Public Instruction and we pretty much administer as we're told. I know we had a few more questions. This, what the, the nice piece about the NIQ, we, we purchased this for teachers because they did not have a platform. I know, Andrew, we've had conversations prior around assessments and curriculum assessments and teacher-generated and developed assessments that they do as part of their instructional practices. Well, they really not had any platform to enter their assessments into. The nice part about NIQ is they could, if they wanted, put them right in NIQ, push them out to the students. The students take them then online, which gives students, again, an experience of taking assessments online since the state assessments are all done online. But also gives students, it's more efficient and effective for teachers because it scores the assessment for them, but also gives immediate feedback to the student. And then tells, you know, actually depicts what would be the right answer and what they, you know, why it was the right answer, so they get immediate feedback to that. So that's one. There are teachers in the district. In fact, we brought it for high school. Middle school is knocking down our door. Can we do it? Can we do it? Anybody that wants to use it can use it. It's not mandatory to use it. It was more as a resource tool for teachers to develop their assessments. What else would you like to know about NIQ?
So we already have it? You're saying people are already using this? So we have already purchased it? Okay. And like, so the board has already okayed, okayed it? They voted? Did you have to go to the?
No, the annual cost is $62,000. So it's another tool. We have multiple tools for educators to use. This would be a tool that educators would use to make their job, I don't want to say easier, but more palatable, especially as its assessment can be somewhat-
And they used it, it's an online thing so that they've already done this through COVID?
Yes, and they have used it through COVID and that was very beneficial, especially with the Google Classroom. They didn't have to wait to enter it into the Google Classroom to turn in the sheet and the teachers has, has to grade it and then re-upload it. They would just take it in NIQ and they could push it immediately, feedback for the students. That's okay. There's no, like, um, it was purchased for teachers as a resource to help them, especially at the high school level. When you look at, we, we often talk about ELA assessments, science, social studies. We have a lot of courses that we offer and teachers are checking for understanding our CTE courses. They like to put their, they, they have the option of putting their assessments in to NIQ and then it, like I said, the way they enter them and they write them, then would score them and give students immediate feedback. Right?
So just for clarification on it, NIQ is kind of the delivery approach for the assessments where it says the ACT Aspire interim assessments, that's just part of what NIQ can deliver. So it's not, it's, it's a plug-and-play type of thing where we can use other assessments. It's not married to ACT Aspire. So with the state leaving ACT Aspire, there's, there's nothing necessarily lost. It's just the format of delivering the assessments, which the teachers can create and there's banks of them.
Yes, and yes, to your point, exactly right. With the, the suite of Aspire being retired, we're not in any loss. There are a bank. In fact, there's a wonderful bank of assessments that are aligned to the Wisconsin State standards as well as the ACT standards. So it's really nice to check and balance teachers, making sure that they have the rigor in the course because this is what students are going to have to face when they take a state assessment. So it's, it's really up to them.
Laura, I have a follow-up with that and I'm not sure if you or Claudia would like to answer it. With the ACT Aspire, there's accommodations that are set up for students that receive special education services. Are those accommodations able to be met? And are they written into the IEPs for the students that receive services using NIQ, like the masking and the extended time? So the students are familiar with that as well when they're taking assessments, whether it's the ACT or other ones outside of just our classroom assessments?
Thank you for the question. Claudia, I'm going to let you answer that question since it's related more closely to the work you oversee.
Yes, they can do accommodations within NIQ as well, so that and that, so everybody sees Dawn's head or hand up numerous times. But yes, they can and it would, that way people, the students would be used to doing it that way once they take the assessments, the standardized assessments.
Go ahead.
Claudia, this is follow-up. Would that also be written into their IEPs then? Claudia, this is a follow-up. Would that also be written into their IEPs then, or is it a case-by-case issue with that?
If they need, if they need accommodations, it would be written into this, into their IP, yes. But NIQ is, is a, it's a platform to use to put tests in. The teachers can put them in the way they'd like them to be and for different students, for different ways.
You're good, Brad. Okay, go ahead, Dawn.
So we're just renewing, you're looking at renewing the contract for three, you, three years to utilize the ESER funding for this, correct? So we have it, there's no implementation of the tool. What is the utilization good? Are teachers using, are teachers using that? Is that something you're able to report off of, or do we know what that utilization is of the tool?
I cannot, I can absolutely have Mr. Miller run that report for you. As to how often that tool's being used. You are correct, it is a tool that we've already, the, the teachers asked for, there was a group that asked for it. And then, of course, we supported getting it as a tool to support them. But you are correct, we do already, we already have a contract this year. And in order to save money on our yearly contracts, I believe we're bundling this one, Vicki, for three years. And then we save, I wanna say overall $6,000 over three years when we would be getting that for the next three years anyway, until something perhaps better comes along or teachers find something that's more effi- efficient or effective. But I'll certainly make sure that you get the usage on that.
When does our existing contract, when is our existing contract up for the tool?
That, this, this year, the end of June.
The end of this year, so we would need it in place for next year.
Right.
Okay.
Anybody else have, Andrew?
Yeah, I, I guess my thought is for something, something this big. I, I think it's, I think it's extremely likely that I will vote, that I would intend to vote yes on what's, what's laid out here in the memo. But to not, unless I'm misunderstanding something, if we're not even sure how many people are using it yet, it seems to be an, an awfully big jump. And perhaps we could get a little more information about adoption and how staff feels about it. Just, just between now and the next board meeting. This is kind of one of those things where I have, my rule that I've adopted as an individual board member is I need to feel 85% sure to vote yes. And I'm probably a bit short of that till I hear more about where, hear more from maybe classroom teachers and where, you know, where the adoption is at. Although I do think it's a positive thing, I probably wouldn't be ready for it tonight, but I probably would be at the next meeting.
And I agree, I mean, since, I, I mean typically I would think something like this would come to the Ed Committee. I don't believe that either of the software came to the Ed Committee and then they would come to the regular board meeting. So I was a little confused as to why they were at a special board meeting without going to a work session or a committee. So if we could get some utilization information and then vote on this at the next board meeting, that would be my preference.
That's going to be skewed because we were asked to stop in assessments. So there are gonna be very few people that have been using them this year.
So they weren't using them at the beginning of the year? They started last September, right? And I mean, we made the change to the assessments at the end of January?
So they would have used them prior, yes.
Yeah, so I mean, you, I mean, we have like two months where they weren't using them. So I would think that, and we can take that into account. I, I guess I'm looking at the number of teachers that are using it as opposed to the number of assessments that have been conducted. But I would just, I'd like to know some utilization before it is, you know, I mean, we're talking about $300,000. So, and if we're, I mean, and if the contract's up, understanding, we need something in place for the next school year. But I would think that we would be able to vote on this and in the, our regular May meeting if we can get that information then.
Thank you.
Go ahead, James.
So, that I understand, these packages are already in place, we're using them. And the cost on an annual basis is below the threshold where the board would be involved in their selection or accommodation. So really, it's just a structure of the contract renewal trying to use ESER. So Andrew, I don't know if 85%, you know, comfortable with the utilization of the software really comes into play because ultimately you have the choice not to use ESER funds, right? And continue this going forward and just renew across five years versus getting the discount and saving $6,000, right?
You're, you're exactly correct because 62, we would then pay year to year and then over this, we'd be less $6,000 where this is a cost savings.
That might just explain why you didn't go to Ed and why you didn't bring it forward, right?
So is Panorama, is that software we exist, we currently use? That's also software, that's new software.
That, that is software we put in place as a result of our, 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 not shut down, our offline work. When we went off-campus for COVID and had to, we worked asynchronous and synchronous. And we found that, that's a whole nother, like, if we're gonna go into there, I'd rather keep these separated because I don't wanna confuse the two fronts. But both of these were brought on as part of the work that we did and what we had learned as shortcomings in the district for the use of resources for our interventionists. And that will come with the Panorama piece as well as the developing assessments and how to push them out online and virtually to students while they were, while we were in a virtual environment. It was very cumbersome, as you know, we put a pause on STAR. We put a pause on almost all of the assessments we had because it was cumbersome to push the assessments out for the teachers, to push it out to the students to do the assessing. So that's where this morphed from. And that's where, that's where really both of these did, but specifically to Aspire. Our, I'm sorry, to NIQ, that is where, that's where this assessment platform came from.
Go ahead. Okay, so the NIQ, that most of that people in high school are using them for their own tests, right? They're not, oh, they're using them for all the, I'm sorry, the, the testing that is like required, that is, they're making like social studies tests and things. So I would think that if they enjoyed that, they would still be using that platform.
Well, this is where I don't wanna throw a wrinkle and get too far in the weeds. But as you know, we have adopted a new resource for science. And we also adopted a new English Language Arts resource for secondary. With each new resource we get, they have their own platform. In one piece, that, so that's in this year, right? Then they have NIQ, so they have the choice to use that assessment platform in those two areas. So you're gonna see that the usage, most likely in science and in ELA or two new resources, they chose to just stay with the platform that came with their new resource, right? And that same piece happens, it, it interfaces with IC, behind the scenes, so on and so forth. So we've only had this for a year. And so as far as developing your curriculum assessments, I think that's what you're alluding to. The, the assessments that the teachers develop to check for student understanding. There are some folks that just weren't ready to take that on into NIQ, but they are behind the scenes, working in small groups to develop what the wording of their assessments would be for their common assessments. And then they would be entering them into NIQ because it's much easier to analyze the data also.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Brad.
My question relates to Panorama, so if anyone else has any questions for NIQ.
Any other questions around?
I have three of them, they're all kind of canned together on this. So my first question is, we just started using Panorama this year, am I correct on that?
It's actually in a pilot because of the, we tried not to implement anything new. And our whole focus is our intervention system. Are, are those serving students in its intervention? The current, the current practice we have right now is we use Infinite Campus. It's a very underdeveloped RTI module. And I, I know the teachers would tell you this, it is ridiculously cumbersome, multiple clicks to develop their personal learning plans, to monitor the data for them where they enter their student progress data, that's what interventionists do as part of their work. And so we looked at Panorama because that's what really it's noted for. Many states across the United States use it as their platform for intervention in RTI.
And my follow-up with that, I assume this is similar to like EduClimber where the, it's the whole system where you're looking at it. With it being the pilot program on this and looking at other districts, particularly within Brown County, do you know how many districts are using Panorama compared to other programs? And my reasoning behind that is we have such a transient population of students that with the turnover that, does the one system talk to another? So if Schwab is using EduClimber, does it talk to Panorama on there? And does that also help as far as services for students with IEPs? And, and do those systems all talk to each other, or are they proprietary and they won't necessarily share the data between them?
Thank you, I'll try to break that apart. The very first piece is prior to the selection of which resource we would use. We did check what our neighbors were using. And so I don't wanna miss, I didn't wanna misspeak on exactly which of the districts are using Panorama. They are being used, it is being used around us. It is, I would like to allu- think about Panorama as EduClimber on steroids. Because what EduClimber does for us, it displays data. You still have data where teachers and principals leading learning support team meetings or monitoring students. They have to go to multiple places to get the data in order to even have the conversation. What Panorama does is it is one platform that also provides opportunity for analyzing the data as well as displaying the data. And I think the most powerful piece of this is that there's a dashboard, a live dashboard. So teachers, principals can have right up, you know, the attendance for today. If students miss three days in a row, it alerts the principal that you have a student that has been absent three days. So it's kind of that, you know, monitor and all of the data is pulled from IC overnight. So that's not, there's no data entry to this. Yeah, I was just gonna say, our, where we're at right now, we've asked all the interventionists. So we, we have, this has been over a year, right, Paul, Claudia, at least, not over a year. We looked at it for a year before, we even said, we went to Steve and asked if we could move forward with this because it'd be a comprehensive platform that pre-K-12 could use for multiple reasons. But the most important is all the data is in one place for, for educators. But right now, we are really focused only on intervention. And they were asked to take one student and become familiar with the system. And then they could add as many as they wanted, but we did wanna ask one student.
And I just have a quick follow-up that ties into that. This information, it goes into the students moving in and out of the district, is, it records interventions, I assume also, which would lead towards qualification for special education. Do other districts have access to that information? So if a student leaves Green Bay and goes to a neighboring district, it doesn't necessarily reset the clock as far as interventions that have been attempted. And would that help us for students in the area? You know, students generally throughout the state, as far as being able to record those interventions, the results with a scientific method that we can see that that follows that student, whether they switch districts or not.
Yes, if they're using a system that's not compatible, what can be done is we actually download and send it as an attachment once they request their records. So that they have and the student can receive intervention is uninterrupted. That's very powerful within our own district as we move from school to school also.
But that doesn't necessarily talk from one system to the other, it would still be kind of downloading. It still records it and it's in a, is a similar format, so they'd be able to see it. But it doesn't necessarily sync the data like it does with IC overnight. They don't, they don't necessarily match up with other systems, though.
That's not my line, I'm not even gonna fake that. Josh is looking at me over there like saying, whoa. But what I can do is, Mr. Miller is very familiar with that and he'd be able to share with you exactly which of the other systems Panorama does speak to. I'll get that for you.
James.
Just a contractual question, I'm sure this has gone through due diligence and you've done a contract review. When you talk about $1.2 million, a five-year contract, what out clauses, what protections do we have? Come year two, three, the district needs to change direction. Is there any penalties or ways out of the contracts in the event that we need to make a decision to change?
Excellent question. Melissa, do you wanna speak to the contract language that we enter when we do the multi-year contracts?
Hi, James, thanks for the question. Yes, you are exactly on point. We always request that sort of clause. In very limited circumstances, will a vendor not be willing to give us that language because of the significant discount they're getting? But in the cases of these two contracts, we have that ability to cancel and get a prorated amount of the unused portion of the contract back.
Thank you.
Andrew?
Yeah, one, one question, I guess, follow-up for, for Melissa and then I have a, a motion. There's no, and I, I guess I don't need to get too, too deep into the technical details. But we, we don't have a, it's our option to change directions. There's not, there's not arbitration clauses or anything, it would be our decision if we wanted to change direction.
There's termination language for cause and for without cause. And they would not require mandatory arbitration.
Okay. I move to, I move to postpone this motion till the next, till the main regular board meeting.
A second. Any discussion?
Can I ask why?
Yeah, about the same, same thing I said before, I, I guess I like to hear, I, I like to have more of a, you know, in, it's no, but it's, it's circumstances that maybe we didn't have a chance to run this through Ed Committee and ask more questions. That's, it's just time to hear more from end users, to ask more, you know, to ask questions. And probably wouldn't be doing this if there was a, a committee meeting. But there was a valid reason to, to postpone, to not have a committee meeting. So if we were on, if, if this at all affected our ability to, to deliver, then that would have pushed me past the point where I would want to delay it. But I'm, there, there's, nothing seems to be lost here by just taking another month.
Claudia?
Is there particular, are there questions, particular questions you would like us to answer to come to the next board meeting with? Any of you, that is?
Go, go ahead, Nancy.
Okay, well, just, you know, how much is it being used and things like that? Because Dawn had that question and, and I think that would be relevant. And also, I would like, I personally would like to go and see it. I understand, I think the, is it NIQ, is that how you said, more than I do the other one. And that one, I'd really like to see in action.
Nancy, did you provide links to?
I did, in fact, our tech integrator has the training. Please note that only our interventionists right now are using it and it was purchased for our interventionists. And we also are no longer going to be in contract with EduClimber. Those funds have been transferred over to a more robust system that's, gives our education. that's gives our educators more access to multiple pieces. So I appreciate you wanting, the, the data and the feedback we've gotten is they love it. They, the interventionists love it because of the ease of it. But also the students' personal or their professional, their personal learning plan is developed just as part of the conversation instead of 15, 16 clicks in an underdeveloped system. So it, it just would be intervention that we're, this is like a pilot. Like we're rolling this out slowly because of the, some of the restrictions and access to teachers and so on and so forth. So we wanted to make sure that they were comfortable in using the system. They're using, some of them are using it with multiple students, that's their choice. But they, we asked them to just get familiar with the system, using it with one student.
Well, and it's the first system time that we've been able to have a picture of the whole child. So besides the academic interventions, there's the other side of it. There's the behavior interventions as well as social emotional learning curriculum, ideas and whatnot that can be put into there. And there's a survey that could be given to the students. So we could determine, do we need to focus on this particular area for this school and this particular area for that school too? So in the past, you've had to go to IC for one thing, the PLP, the counseling to have, NI-CO, people's own notes. So we're pretty excited to have, we no longer speak of the child. And let's have an academic discussion, let's have a social emotional discussion. We come to our LST meetings now trying to have a conversation about the whole child.
Just a question with the motion that's on the floor with it. And through Andrew, if that's okay. Is there any cost loss with, is there a chance that the cost would go up? Or are we locked into this quote for another, for a month? Is there an end date that if we postpone this, that the cost could increase?
I, I can certainly look into that.
Vicky, I think you wanted to add some, oh, go ahead Laura.
Hi, in reading this, I think, I think we have a, we're fortunate to have educators on the board, but we also have people that look at the big overall picture. And I think with looking at the information provided, I just keep going to what we're really ask, what the request is to exceed the 250,000 expenditure limit. And so for me, I think with, with what has already been said by, by Dawn and Andrew, I would, as a board member, I would just want to see, here's what we've been doing. Here's how, not so much what it is, but how we've used it and how, here's why we really want to continue it because of these, we've seen these things happen and we want it to continue. But I think this is probably means a lot to Brian and Nancy, the, the amount of detail. And it does to me a little bit just to be able to see it. But I think look, trying to keep the board at a high policy level. I just would like to see if we're going to exceed this amount. What are the things that we're getting for that versus? Again, just to build it, but there was something, um, let's see, very positive. You know, I think that's good, but I, I, I think just what I look at is what are, what is the data saying? Or how much is it used or, or things like that? So I, I can be okay with moving it to May and just to have more information as Dawn has expressed.
Nancy, can I ask, what's the plan for, what's the plan for full implementation? What's your ETA to have that fully implemented with interventionists using it on all their students?
That would be training in August since they'll already be familiar with it. And they've already been entering the students who are on their caseload. And they're also looking at the information that's in IC right now in transferring the information that's in the IC RTI module and moving that into Panorama so it all comes over and they're not bombarded with all of that in their implementation year. So in September, we'd be prepared then to support having all our students who are currently in intervention and interventionist trained it, they're already in the training, but we'll get new interventionists and so we'll continue the training. But they will have, it would be the use, September would be the go date for using the resource as an intervention tool. Now, keep that in mind that we also have forward exam. There's only four assessments that are in there right now. The access, the forward exam, the reading records. And I wrote these down so I wouldn't forget them. And fast bridge, special education assessment. So those are the only four, we got four with this package. And so we have only four assessments in there. And so right now, like I had mentioned, the focus is on intervention because of the underdeveloped system. And I, I would imagine, Vicky, we could survey, but I don't want to mislead the board that there aren't very many people using this right now because we've taken a year to build it out and to make sure that teachers who need it most are using it and have an opportunity to be comfortable with it. So maybe we could get some guided questions from you that you would like answers to, just so we give you what you need.
But the plan is that, that you will have all the interventionists using it with all their students come fall. And you had said, you said it interfaces with IC though, right? So, so they don't have to go and manually enter the information from IC in.
That, that's correct Dawn.
It's going to be, there's an interface and that's in place already, that's already there.
It is, it absolutely is, that's how it's built. And we've been waiting for this to even get our assessments over and our student demographics and all that information. It's taken a half a year for that to even merge over. But there are parts in the RTI module, in the IC module for RTI that will not be compatible to be pushed out of IC because so much of their, the old note taking for the interventionist was narrative in nature. And it can't be pulled over. So what you do is you make a copy and you send it over and they just attach it as an attachment to the new personal learning plan. It's, it's just a load.
Yeah, go ahead James.
So the, the request is for us to exceed the limit, right? And it's all based on contract structure. You're not asking the board to evaluate, evaluate whether or not we should use this, right? Because it's going to take more than a few questions and, you know, 30 minutes to an hour at a board meeting to get me beyond, you know, not knowing anything about this to evaluate it. So ultimately, the 1.2 million dollars, you described the savings on NI-CO, $6,000 for going with a three-year contract. What's the savings on the other system for going with a five-year contract?
I thought I put the overall savings in there. I'm sorry, I should have had that in there and I should be able to bring that up to you. Noting that the annual cost for the total teaching and learning is 220,000. I guess I could whip up math here for you and.
What was the percentage, um, discount that you received?
It wasn't quite calculated, like, because what we did is we really, two things that you get when you go to a multi-year contract, you get additional perks or additional add-ons to your use that would benefit. And then of course, I can absolutely get you that information, but it's size of, or we wouldn't, we wouldn't pursue that.
Okay, firstly, I just want to call in Melissa Thiel-Koller, she's been waiting for a while.
Hey, I just want to clarify something, we're not asking to exceed the limits. Our purchasing policy is modeled after the federal grants guidance, which requires any contract that we enter into that exceeds $250,000 for services be brought to the board for approval. So we're not exceeding anything, it's just one of the steps that's required for contract under 250,000. We can enter into those that, without board approval. And that's why we're already in this contract because the first contract was under 250,000.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
If we don't, if we don't approve, if, if we don't approve the use of ESSER funds, you're going to get the software anywhere, you're just going to, anyway, you're just going to pay the annual fee and it's going to cost more.
That's correct.
That is correct.
So the, the point here is that, I guess, we, we have often taken a vote separately on things that have high impact on, on the classroom, whether or not it meant the, you know, whether or not it's meant cer- certain, certain dollar values. I, I suppose we could, you know, the board could vote no on using the, if the board voted no on using ESSER. And I think we're getting pretty deep down a path that's unlikely to happen. For me, this is about doing things right, having a chance if, since we didn't have a chance to have committees, which, you know, to get, to have people have a chance to get a little bit more information when no harm is done in, by the delay, which is why I asked. I mean, yes, technically the administration could respond to the board not wanting to get it by continuing to get it in another format, but realistically that wouldn't happen. Realistically, there would be conversations and so forth. To me, something that is this big of a change is something that should be brought to the, if it, if it didn't cost very much at all, but was fundamentally changing the way that teachers entered assessments. I would want to see it come to the board anyways. It's been a hot topic of discussion and this, this might be the fix. This, this might be the fix for one of the biggest sources of frustration, but no harm is lost in having a few more weeks to find out more about it.
I agree Andrew. Go ahead James.
I just don't understand the structure of finding out more and what we're going to do in two weeks' time to evaluate the use of this software to a point where non-educators that aren't intimately aware of this will make a decision to support or not support an evaluation of software. What you're suggesting, which I agree with actually, Andrew, is if you feel like we didn't take the steps and this should have been RFP'd and evaluated and graded, that's one thing. But I don't know what two weeks and an informal committee meeting is going to do, should do to change people's lives.
Well, for, for one, I, I don't need to see it, but I, I think at least one other, one board member would like to see it in person. Now, would, would that be enough reason for me to forfeit a discount to have time for one board member to see a person? No, it would not. But when there is literally no harm in the delay, then yes. Even if it was just one board member's desire to, to see it in person, that's easily good enough for me when the downside is, is literally zero.
Melissa?
I just want to remark to James' comment about the RFP. Because this is a renewal, we're not required, we were not required to RFP this. So I just wanted to make sure that was clear too. There are certain circumstances where we are required to RFP, but because this is simply a renewal and the only reason it's coming to the board is because it exceeds that 250,000, there was no RFP.
In both cases, I understand the, the smaller package, but the first one I thought is in pilot. So we are in contract with that?
Is that correct Nancy and Claudia?
That is correct.
All right, do we have any other, so we have a motion to, can you read the motion Beth?
This was made by Becker, seconded by Smith. I move to postpone the motion to the May regular board meeting.
Are we ready to vote on that? Okay, go ahead Beth. Okay, Smith?
Aye.
Leighton and Warren?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Welch?
Aye.
Lyerly?
Aye.
Mills?
Aye.
No. Okay, motion passes six to one. Now we're on to the, I think that completes that, right? Yep, okay. Thank you for the discussion, everyone. That was pretty intense. Lot of good questions. We're moving on to, let's see here. Yep. Under action items, letter B, social emotional learning curriculum resources. All right, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, this one, we would need a vote on tonight so that we would receive the materials in time for.
Yeah, I'm sorry, point of order, someone needs to make a motion. To, right, don't we?
She's just explaining what we're.
Okay, I'm, I'm sure.
Okay.
My mistake.
Keep going.
Okay, so this one, we would need a vote tonight in order for us to get the materials within this school year. We've heard loud and clear from our parents and from our staff, the importance of addressing mental health concerns of our students. Claudia was able to pull together in very short order, along with the rest of her team. I think Katie's here with her and Christine. In very short order, a, a group to evaluate a variety of curriculum opportunities. And Claudia is here to tell us a little bit about it and respond to any questions that you might have. They did make a final selection. Claudia?
Yes, so we've wanted a social emotional learning curriculum, universal curriculum for a while. COVID gave us the opportunity and the space for that. Now that we have created morning meetings for elementary and advisory time for secondary, it was a perfect time for us to start looking at cell resources for the universal. We did a cross group of people, including the GBA members. Justin Delphos joined us and looked at seven different curriculum resources. And we decided by cultural responsive minds because it already aligns with the cultural responsive practices that we've been learning about and invested in for the last four years. And that's the cultural responsive teaching practices with Dr. Shroki Holly. These lessons are very aligned and stu-, they can be used on a daily basis or they can be used once or twice a week and infused with different resources if staff need to be, need, want to continue to use some of the other resources that we've provided to them throughout the year. For this entire past year and a half, we have been creating and enveloping all of the social emotional learning resources that staff have been doing during those morning meeting times and advisory times. Unless some of the secondaries wanted to create their own teams to do that, very laborious. And this will help them with that task. And I have Katie Sulzer, Katie Suko and Christina Jingo on the line too, if you have questions around this curriculum.
Can I, can we use ESSER funds for this or is this operational funds?
We're using operational funds at the moment.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any questions? Go ahead Laura.
Do we need a motion to discuss this? Because I want to, I want to make a motion and talk about it. Or do we want to talk about it first?
Okay, sorry guys, who would like to read the motion? Go ahead.
Point of order, I don't, we don't have a motion, so we're discussing the, the topic. I don't think we need to make a motion to. There's nothing specific that we're voting on right now, so we could, thank you. I, I don't think we need to make a motion to have the discussion of the, the concept of it.
Okay, yeah.
That's what we did on the ESSER one, the one we just did. We read the motion and then we discussed it. And it says action items, we're under action items right here.
So did we?
We never did, we didn't do the original motion, Andrew offered a different alternative.
But there is a motion, okay, okay.
So we kind of, we had, we had discussion and then Andrew did a different motion. And then we voted on that and it passed, so go ahead Laura.
Either way, I just wanted to, well, I'm sure we'll, we'll get through all these, these bumps along the way. I just wanted to, to thank you guys for putting this together. And I, I know when I went through the board materials for this one, I was like, yes. And I think the memo that is, which is why I was going to make the motion to, to so move as the recommendation motion. But I think what I, especially, what I think, when I just mentioned at the last discussion, what I really liked about this was the background of why the options and why it was, the decision was made. the background of why the options and why it was, the decision was made, and I think it was incredibly insightful to say it wasn't the highest vote getter, but this is the process we use, and here's why we support that. So I appreciate the way that this is put together. I'm familiar with cultural and linguistic responsive teaching. I am, I was, had the opportunity to attend that training last summer, and I think that the thoughtfulness and the responsibility of, of linking this type of practice with something we've already spent money on is, is, is a great fiscal move, and also, it's really going to benefit our students, so, so thank you, I support this.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Brian.
I assume this is similar to other curriculum adoptions, that this is a one-time cost of $343,000, and then this wouldn't be an annual cost, this is the books and the licenses and stuff with that.
Yes, we chose to purchase the eBooks, because then we get a number of other perks, and I think Katie Suko can speak to that, but yes, it's a one-time purchase or cost, except for there will be some additional training next year and coaching training, because we want to be able to teach it within, internally, we won't, you don't want to have to go out and have it trained by the, the person who created it. Every single year, we want to build coaching, coaches within our own district.
Okay, James?
Can I ask a question? I'm assuming that this is a graded RFP response?
Yes. I put the grade, I think we put the grades, the, down at the bottom.
You did, you did, so I'm, we have a duty to make decisions and make sure that we can support those decisions to the public. And so Laura, I appreciate your comments and agree with you. You've abstracted the, the data in the categories. Can I ask a question as to whether or not the selected package? It feels like you, you, you're supporting this not going with the highest-scoring vendor because of fit. Can you describe the scores in the fit category as to whether or not this package actually scored the highest in that category?
I would have to look at, Katie or Katie, do you have that information right offhand or no? I do want you to, to recognize the, the other, the other curriculum resource that was, came out higher, did not come out statistically significantly higher, is less than a percentage point, and that one would have a cost, an annual cost every, every year.
Where's cost not a category that was graded?
No.
Okay, thank you.
I think it was also, to answer your question, the, the reoccurring fee on the character strong was also considered, whereas culture responsive minds was that one-time fee with a minimal recurring fees. So that was a piece of it as well, but really, it aligned with what we're doing around changing skillset and mindset of classroom instruction, when it comes to, to really that, creating that sense of belonging and validating and affirming students' identities, and so that really supports that. So that was one of the major factors.
So, just one last follow-up. Is it typical when we go to RFP not to include price in the score?
Our department hasn't really gone to RFP much, and so we put together the, the package of, or the questions we thought were the most relevant, and after the fact realized, we should have had cost probably included.
That's fine, I just want to make sure I understand the data, thank you.
Josh?
And please know that also, we did talk to a number of the people that were on the committee, and they, um, they said that they would be fine with either of the two choices that were the top two, and they understood and believed that this was the better, the better choice to continue on our journey of cultural responsiveness.
And James, just to clarify, we did not go through a formal RFP process for this. We talked with our director of procurement, the nature of these sorts of things. It's not like you're buying widgets or something like that, right? Where an RFP is very straightforward. The, the features, the quality, like, it, it's very difficult to compare, to compare these things in the context of a formal RFP. So what they did was they, you know, they, they requested essentially dog and pony shows of all these things and evaluated them, and it made the, the best decision. So this would be, if you look at the board policy on purchasing, this would fall under the sole source justification for a purchase as opposed to a formally scored RFP. I just wanted to make that clear.
Thank you.
Andrew.
Yeah, that's, that's where, that's where I was going as well. I'm not here, I'm not, I'm not concerned, because we, you know, we have, not often, but occasionally, we have had times where we've, something has been a little bit higher on the, the scorecard, and yes, formal, if it's, when it's been for, you know, technology, the, the points are clearer. So, to me, this is a, you know, this is a recommendation from the, from the superintendent that was scored by a committee, and then valid reason was presented for the, the close second choice of the committee being a better match for what we're doing, because all things considered. And so, I'm certainly, I'm certainly supportive of, of this and excited about it.
Go ahead, Brian.
I'd like to make the motion as written, that the purchase of the culturally responsive minds at a cost of $343,570 as presented be approved.
You have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All right, do we need any more discussion? Anyone else have anything to offer? Okay, Beth, I think we're ready. Becker?
Aye.
Welch?
Aye.
Mills?
Aye.
Leighton and Warren?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Lyerly?
Aye.
McCoy? Aye. Motion passes seven zero. Now, we move on to,
Thank you all for your time on this, I think our students will thank you too.
Thank you, Claudia, and to your team as well. Thank you for coming tonight and, and answering all these questions, we really appreciate it. Okay, we're moving on to C, we've got some policies that need to be changed to reflect our, our decision to go back to having work sessions and to pause the, the committee work that we were doing, so, let's see here. Just, should we just go ahead and read the motion and then have discussion about the first one? Anyone want to read the motion?
So we are making a motion before we discuss, is that where we're at? I mean, I think that's, that's best practice, so,
All right, let's go ahead and do that.
Okay.
I can do it. I recommend that the, I move that the revisions to Board Education Policy 151, the adoption, revision, maintenance, and dissemination of board policy as presented be approved.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Melissa, do you have anything to add to any of this?
These policies are really just going back to what they existed before the other change was made, and so it was very easy within board docs to bring back the prior existing policies. You'll see that changes are reflected in the redline version.
Okay. And this applies to all the, let me see, one, two, three, four, four different policies.
Correct, but we have to take one each on their own.
Exactly, but I just wanted to, I just wanted to just affirm that the, that this is, the reason why we're doing this with all four of these is because of this change back.
Correct. The only substance, change of substance is in the rule and the policy regarding the work sessions, we renamed the work sessions and just called them what we had called them under the, when we were in the committee structure, because that would be what the new board members are more familiar with, it's the same content. We did get rid of the monitoring reports and replaced that with the policy and governance work session.
Okay. Go ahead, Andrew.
Okay, so, this to me, it seems to be an, an extremely drastic step to take so quickly and to be presented to new board members on their, on their first night. Do, do I support a pause in committee meetings and a switch to work sessions for a little while to get, just to get all board members together and maybe have discussing things? Yes, in fact, that's why I, I, that's why, although I was, it wasn't really voted down, it was most, I guess, more just ignored when I suggested it last time, a few smiles and nods, and then ignored when I said it would be good to have the work sessions to guarantee an additional open public forum, to guarantee all seven board members speaking together about, about things, even though there may also be value in a sub, in a smaller committee doing a deeper dive with people who are very interested in that. That's why specifically, we didn't, we did, we never deleted the existence of work sessions, and we can, we can still have them, and I think they're a relevant, a relevant alternative to these committee meetings, but I don't see, I think there was maybe untapped value in that committee structure, and this essentially, this essentially ends them before they're even tried with the new board, and realistically, we're not going to, you know, we're not going to come back to it. So, I think we should have work sessions. I think it's okay to make a motion to not have committee meetings for a couple months and do the work sessions instead, but I don't see why we have to make a, a permanent, permanently change policy to get rid of last year's structurally, right, right now, when we can do it another way and get the same result.
Just have a question as far as policy and our ability to change this. If we decide in two months that we would like to go back to the method that was taking place last year, would take notification, policy change, vote, I would assume about a month's time on that, am I correct? Ish?
I think, yeah.
Just, just following the procedures that we have.
I don't see this as irreversible.
So,
If we, if we decided that as a, as a board, I mean, a lot of us, I, I would just say that I've been waiting for all of us to kind of be assembled finally, all of us, and to, so that we can start talking about some of this stuff as a unit. This is our first crack at this, so with, with the newness of our board, this is the recommendation that I think has a lot of value, so that everyone is hearing the same information all at the same time.
So,
For now, that's all.
So with the question, this isn't something that would have to be tied into, okay, this is the first meeting of our board with the, the current makeup of it, so it's not establishing any norm, it's not establishing a policy that would go for a year, this is changing it, and if we decide in three months, we can change it back and go that way, correct?
I, that's, that is what I believe, yes. Melissa, do you have anything to add to that?
Other than it would be an easy process on my end, because with, again, with board docs, we simply retire the old policies, so we just need to do a, bring them back and then compare them to the existing policies, and we could have them on the agenda.
Okay. I, I would look forward to in the future, having the conversation again, if we want to have another look at, at committee work. And, you know, I, I certainly, in my mind, not thinking that this is necessarily permanent. But, but we do, we are going to, we are going to take a vote on it tonight, so. Go ahead, Andrew.
So, I, I guess it just, it's, it's a little concerning to me that right at the time when there's starting to be maybe some discussion about what the committees weren't and what they could become, such as having differing viewpoints on the board, differing viewpoints on committees, different types of representation on committees. You know, it does, it does dig a hole for something when you voted, when you voted down it a, you know, when you vote to get rid of it at a meeting. And I just, again, I don't see the need for this. We could make a motion to suspend committee meetings, and work sessions were never deleted. They were never deleted here, so I don't, I just don't see why we need to do it. We can, we can schedule work sessions right now, already.
Go ahead.
Just looking at the historical perspective of it, the last year, we're two committees meeting at the same time.
Occasionally.
Okay, so that would, with that practice being set up, that would require a board member to decide if, they're obviously going to the one that they're assigned to, but if there's information being presented, the other one, it would have been either presented in a different manner based on the lens that the person presenting it has, as opposed to a board member being able to sit there and receive it firsthand, so we're all having the same information.
Right. I, I mean, I'll, I'll just say my personal opinion about the committees were, I, I think they did have some value, but the, our schedules changed often, there seemed to be a lot of confusion about them a lot of the time, and because of the newness of our board, I think everyone, well, not everyone, I don't want to speak for everyone, but from my way of thinking, it, there is a huge benefit right now for us to be hearing that, like I said, the same information all together at the same time. We can revisit this, I think it sounds like we will revisit this at some point. But for tonight's purposes, I would like to go ahead and take these votes and, you know, maybe put it back on the agenda in, in three months. Any, oh, I'm sorry, Nancy?
I, I think it was only one time that it was doubled up, and because they sent a memo to Vicky and said, "Vicky, is this going to happen from now on?" And you said, "No, it was because of spring break," right? That's what it was. How can I see that meeting?
Any, go ahead, Andrew.
I will move to amend the motion by adding and that the policy will be revisited in the July regular board meeting.
Brian?
I have a question that follows our normal policy on it, that it doesn't seem like it would follow the consistency of a regular policy to have it that far out, so.
I don't know, I mean,
Laura, can I ask a clarifying question?
Yes, please.
Andrew, do you mean the regular board meeting or a work session? Because if you wanted the, the, the committee structure brought back, to me, I would think, because the, the policies are now going to require policies to be brought to a work session, unless there's an emergency or time-sensitive changes, and then approved at the regular board meeting, would you want the discussion at the work session and then the changes brought to the work, to the regular meeting? Or do you want it at a regular meeting? Because I, I'm not quite sure what we would bring for your consideration to a regular board meeting, without having the discussion first.
My motion of postponing action, or I mean, of, of having new action being considered in, in July, I, I think that implies the meeting cycle, but if, that's the, I'm, that's implied. The July meeting, it would go through, yeah, so it would go through the work session and then at the July meeting.
Thank you.
Do we have a second? Okay.
I wouldn't,
I'll second. Yes, Laura.
I, I think that, I know last year, it was early on, but I was a huge proponent of going to the committee structure, because that's what we've done in Omaida. I, but it was very different, and I didn't realize that when I was in support of that, because it was a lot more informal, we would have, you know, whatever the topic was, you'd have people come in and be able to talk about, we, you know, for the dress code, we'd have, maybe invite principals or students or whatever to come in and talk to the, to the committee, and then bring that information back to the larger board. Because we did not operate that way, I think, I think Andrew had said an underutilized opportunity, or there was, there was some reason, I mean, some statement that you made, that I, I think that the, the committees were not, that I, I think that the, the committees were not progressing the way I had envisioned for them to be really beneficial. I think that if we could somehow, I think I need to understand clearly more, I know we operated them just like a smaller board meeting, if any board members went to the committee meetings, they were not able to participate, they were just, so I think the committee structure could work, but we'd have to look at how it can be adjusted to best meet the needs that we had talked about. So, but I, I support work sessions, I think it's great to have us all come together, the, the last policy and governance committee, we talked about teacher, teacher ratios and, and classrooms, and I think that was like, we, we already, we said, you know, rather than go through this entire discussion, this really has to happen with the full board. So that's why we recommended it come back in addition to there being some new board members. So I think that, I wonder if, Melissa, if you could share the, maybe the rationale or the, the benefit to adjusting policy versus just postponing for a few months and reevaluating?
Postponing the work, the.
The committees, yeah, the committees, and then just resuming work sessions, because I just want, want to understand kind of the logistics of it.
Yes, but we, yep, we had talked, we had talked about that, and our concern was, are you violating your own policy by not meeting? And then if there is a disagreement over holding those meetings, who's the tiebreaker? And can one board member call a committee meeting? And then what happens with respect to that? And again, just because of the ease of being able to re, to bring back the old policies, we thought it'd just be cleaner to go back to a, a very transparent version of work sessions, board meetings, without muddying the waters with the committee meetings, and if the board changes their mind, then we can easily bring back those other policies in that structure.
Thank you, just to follow up to, I know when I, when I did come on, it was, this has been, this is, this is the way it's been on the books and we hadn't been following our policy, if I believe, and that's kind of why we did go back to the committees, is that, am I remembering that correctly?
Hmm, I don't know about that.
No, we've, we've never had, we've, we've never had a committee structure before.
Got it, okay. Got it, okay, I think that was, maybe Steve had had that experience previously that he had brought it forward, so, okay, thank you, I appreciate that.
Go ahead.
I'm willing to, I'm willing to withdraw my motion if there's unanimous consent, if, if I get, if, if there is a binding commitment that this will be revisited in July.
At the work session.
In, in the July meeting cycle.
Okay.
The withdrawal, the, the mechanics of the withdrawal or the putting a binding commitment?
I think the binding commitment is, is tying two things together on it.
I think if the president says something's gonna be on the July agenda because they can do that, then I'll, I mean, I'm just willing to, I just want to see that there is something, something binding that this can't just go away because of this vote, because I think the committees, the committee structure is, I was told it was going to happen by people who are not here anymore, was one thing, I was told about different voices at the table, and then the, immediately at my very first committee meeting, I was told, no, none of what, none of that is allowed to happen. So that was then, this is now, I'm just a little worried about the, even if there, you know, I don't, you know, governing by head, head nodding around the table is not passing something, if not.
I, I think we have a motion on the floor and it's got a second, so.
Better vote on.
To offer the friendly, or to offer the change to it, so move that we call a question on the motion.
Let's take a, maybe we've just voted, voted, vote on it and see where it goes. So go ahead, James.
I'm confused what we're voting on.
Yep, please, Beth, can you read the motion?
Absolutely.
Go ahead.
The motion on the table is that the policy will be revisited in the July regular board meeting.
So that's the amendment, then if the amendment passes, then the changes are made and revisited in the July board meeting, which implies, if we're also passing a, if we're also passing a policy that things go through a work session, then by extension, this being in the July meeting would go through a work session in July.
Okay, simplify that, please.
So it, I think this ties into the motion that's on there, if this motion passes, it doesn't mean that the main motion has passed, this is a friendly to adjust the motion. So we would be voting on it twice, the first one is, do you want July? If that passes, then the second motion, do we readdress it, would come up.
No, because it's, it's not postponing, so the, my amendment would be to say that the, you know, the policy, the, the revisions be adopted and revisited in July, so the and revisited in July is the amendment that I'm proposing.
Melissa, would we have to add that language on to the rest of the policies that we're voting on?
So every, every policy change is reflective of eliminating the committee structure, so it would be, every one of those policies will have to come back if you go back to the committee structure. That's why I'm wondering, are you requesting the policies to come back? Or are you simply requesting a discussion on the committee structure at that work session? And if the discussion is on the committee structure, then I can bring the policies then that are relevant to the committee structure to the regular board meeting. I don't know if you need to have every single policy brought back to that regular work session, because they're, they're all gonna have to get changed anyway, I think it just really is a topic of work committees versus working committees, work, work sessions versus committees, that structure.
And pertaining to what Laura mentioned about maybe if we were to go back to committees, we might want to tweak what we had and change it from, from what it was, so I don't, I can't, no one can really say what that'll look like when we finally do have the discussion in, in July. Like, we might want to change from what we, what we had before, it sounds like, you know, there's interest in that, at least from one board member, so maybe it's just cleaner to, I, I mean, what would be the best thing is just to have Beth put it on the agenda for July, which she keeps a running agenda anyway, and just put it there now and, and ask you to please be comfortable with that, I'm sorry.
Well, that, that's kind of what I was trying to do, although do, do respect to Beth, who keeps an excellent agenda, the authority to put something on the agenda is with the, the board or the president or the superintendent, so if you, if you are saying, you'll, it'll be on the, it'll be a topic on the July work session agenda, and there isn't anything weird about that, like if, if something comes through a board agenda, then it can be forwarded for action, I don't need my amendment on any of these. That's why I was trying to offer to withdraw it, if, if, if that gets placed on the July agenda, which could happen in, could happen like really, really quickly if you wanted to do that.
Let's do that.
Just offer some clarification as to the policies, currently our regular board meetings are scheduled on the second Monday of the month, these policies suggest that we flip them, so the work session be on the second Monday of the month, and then the regular board meeting would be held on the fourth Monday of the month.
Right.
So just so that's on everybody's radar as well.
Yeah, that's a change that I, yes, that we'll be voting on.
I'll, I'll withdraw my motion, I think that needs unanimous consent, but if there is, I'll withdraw.
All in favor? Hi, okay, go ahead, Laura.
I just wanted to point out that I think we, as a, as a group, we're, we're new here, we have a, a new acting superintendent, we, I think we need to move forward with some good faith effort in knowing that we're all gonna make the best decision for the district, I think, looking at the committee structure last year, if I recall, we had to do some convincing to move that direction for those that were proponents of it, as I mentioned, I was in full support, now I recognize that I, I don't, they weren't working the way I thought that that could be done best to what I had envisioned, so I, I trust that we will all come back, and if that's gonna be the best thing for the district, that we will look at that again. So I appreciate the, the thought to bring it back in July, I think that's, that's a great thing to do that, but I think we also need to move forward with some trust with each other with a new, a lot of a new group.
Yeah, we got a lot of newness here, I would agree with that, go, go ahead, Brian.
I'd like to call a question on the initial motion of, that was stated as far as the revisions to the board policy 151, et cetera.
Okay. Question has been called, I think we're ready to vote then. Smith.
Hi.
Becker.
Hi. Hi.
McCoy.
Hi.
Welch.
Hi.
Mills.
Hi.
Hi.
Motion passes 7-0, onto letter D, policy 170, would someone please read the motion?
I'll move the revisions to Board of Education policy 170, meetings of the Board of Education as presented be approved?
Second. Any discussion? Okay, I think we're ready, Beth. McCoy.
Hi.
Leighton and Warren.
Hi.
Smith.
Hi.
Mills.
Hi.
Hi.
Welch.
Hi.
Becker.
Hi.
Motion carries 7-0, onto E, rule 170. Would someone please read the motion?
I'll make the motion, that the revisions to Board of Education policy 187, public participation in school board meetings as presented be approved. I'll second.
Any discussion? Okay, go ahead, Beth. Becker.
Hi.
Welch.
Hi.
Mills.
Hi.
Leighton and Warren.
Hi.
Smith.
Hi.
Lyerly.
Hi.
McCoy. Hi. Last one is.
Should we do E?
Yeah, wait a minute. Oh, God, I, I think.
I'll move, so wait, I.
We, we, we flip flopped, so we just voted on F, but did you read the right, did you read the right motion? Okay.
He read F, we voted on F.
Okay, so now we need to go back to E.
I'll move, I, I moved that the revisions to Board of Education rule 170, procedures for appointing school board members to preside over work session meetings as presented be approved.
Second? Second, okay, we can vote, any discussion, sorry. Let's go ahead and vote, Beth. Leighton and Warren.
Hi.
McCoy.
Hi.
Mills.
Hi.
Welch.
Hi.
Lyerly.
Hi.
Becker.
Hi.
Smith.
Hi.
Motion passes 7-0, onto letter G, policy 441.1, student government. Would someone please read the motion?
I move that the revisions to Board of Education policy 441.1, student government as presented be approved.
Is there a second? Thank you. Any discussion? Go ahead.
This just continues with the same thing that we've been talking about to make it all line up, correct?
Yes. All right, any, anything else? I think we're ready, Beth. Smith.
Hi.
Leighton and Warren.
Hi.
Becker.
Hi.
Welch.
Hi.
Lyerly.
Hi.
Mills.
Hi.
Hi. Next is letter H, rule 441.1, inner city high school student council constitution and bylaws, would someone please read the motion?
I move that the revisions to the Board of Education rule 441.1, intra-city high school student council constitution and bylaws as presented be approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Beth. Leighton and Warren.
Hi.
Mills.
Hi.
Hi.
Lyerly.
Hi.
McCoy.
Hi.
Smith.
Hi.
Becker.
Hi.
Okay, that concludes our agenda, before we adjourn, I just wanted to say, first of all, I just wanted to say that thank you, Laura, for what you said about me before, and I thank you all for showing faith in me as, as in a leadership role, we've got a lot of really challenging work ahead of us, and I think it's, sometimes it's really hard to get your arms around the enormous changes in our district and in public education in general, but I know this board is up to the job, and I will do everything I can to support the goal, the only goal really, which is what is best for our students, I just wanted to make sure I said that before we adjourn for tonight. So it's good to be in the same space as all of you, Dawn, next time you'll be with us and we'll really see what our full board looks like altogether, so with that, I'll. Laura, are we, are we actually adjourning if we're going back into closed session? Oh. That's right, I have to, someone needs to read the motion again to go, can someone find that?
I will read it, I read it the first.
Go ahead, go ahead, sorry, thank you, good catch.
I move that the board convene in closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19, 8, 19.85, 1C, to consider employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over whom the board has jurisdiction in Wisconsin statute 19.85, 1F, to consider financial, medical, social, or personal histories which if discussed in public would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of persons referred to specifically to discuss the interim superintendent's administrative contract.
Second. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Beth, will you join us in closed session, please? Thank you. Okay, we'll reconvene across.
Laura, Laura, we need, we need individual votes on that closed session, we can't do a voice vote.
Okay, sorry, good catch, thank you.
Sorry.
Go ahead. Thank you, Melissa. Smith, are you still there?
Yep.
Hi.
Leighton and Warren.
Hi.
Hi.
McCoy.
Hi.
Welch.
Hi.
Lyerly.
Hi.
All right, I'll see you across, across the hall.
You have been watching the Green Bay area Public School District's Board of Education meeting, please visit the school district's website, www.gbaps.org to view the program again. If you cannot fully access the information on this video, please let us know the accessibility issue you are having by calling 920-448-2025, or by email at communications@gbaps.org. We will try to provide the information to you in an alternative format and/or make the necessary improvements to make the information accessible.